All right, Town and Hennessy Board of Trustees, regular meeting. Call to order, roll call.
Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Report from town in Hennessy, AD, HOC agencies. Barb?
We haven't had a meeting.
I could say I haven't had no, uh, any meeting. Consider approval of the consent agenda. Approval of June meetings. Make a motion to approve the June meetings.
Mr. Mayor, that's all part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, all of those items as they're planned.
Okay. Approval of claims, purchase orders, $65,674.44. The RSTF fund. Cemetery care, juvenile fund, library fund, street and alley fund at $58.50. Previous month, purchase orders, $10,143.09. Accepted department reports. The quarterly financial reports from Crawford and Associates. Approved FY2024 budget amendments, number four, five, and six.
I have a question on the June minutes. We need to, can we talk about that now or does it need to be brought down?
It needs to get brought down.
Move item approval of June meetings down to... Six one, right before six one.
I may could approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Just a minute. Who's seconded?
I don't think.
Okay, Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Harold?
Yes.
Number four, citizen comment.
Nobody. On the new board member or somebody to replace Cliff on the board, have you all set a deadline or something, accepting these applications? I understand you have some more people. Or what's the, what's the deal on this? How long is this gonna go on or is there a schedule?
Uh, we have set a deadline. We have six days to appoint somebody. We need to, can we do anything about like setting a date? Yeah, no.
Do what?
I asked if we could set a date. She just knows it's not, I don't think.
So... And then you, then if you don't appoint somebody, there will be an election. You have to call an election, right?
Yes.
The board, or an election, and you haven't made any decisions on any of this yet. Okay. Okay. Andy, sorry, me. I was surprised when I got the agenda and you didn't have an election for the mayor.
We, uh...
Since, yeah, at this meeting, is there...
We don't have a full board yet.
Well, I know you don't have one, but you, I mean, you're gonna have to elect a mayor.
Cause I'm just the acting mayor. And, uh, once the city gets elected or appointed, then we'll have to have a vote on the mayor.
Okay. I don't know if it's been done that way.
That was the cause of the attorney.
Why, is that something that's required?
The attorney.
According to our ordinances and statute, and correct me if I'm wrong, the vice mayor serves as mayor until a mayor is elected and qualified. So, until we have a board. So, I understand it's a full board.
Uh, oh, okay.
That was what, Barb, that was what our attorney has suggested that we do.
He just suggested, it's not law, right?
Well, there's no law that says you have to elect it since we have somebody to fill in, so...
No, I did that, wait, it's not a requirement, it's just a suggestion. What was his thinking about that?
He's not here, he's on vacation, so you would have to ask him, I cannot give you...
All right, thanks.
Jared's not gonna be here tonight?
No, he's, when we hired him back in March, he told us he was gonna be gone this month.
I just didn't recall it being handled that way in the past when we had...
I don't, uh, the last time we had a board member resign. Of course, our mayor, you know, vice mayor was not the one that resigned. I know when Keith left, you know, so, uh, you know, nothing changed from that point that we elected another member. Then we voted immediately, the first meeting after that, we voted for the vice mayor and mayor again.
Thank you, sorry to the point.
That's cool.
Town administrator report?
I have my report. It's short.
Anything else on side with you guys?
Uh, we did have a buckle in front of Prairie Quilts, as you've seen on All About Hennessy today. I've already gotten contact. As soon as it came to our attention, we got the cones out there to protect pedestrians. And I've gotten ahold of Daniel Construction to come out and get that fixed as quickly as possible.
Tiffany, I just noticed a while ago, when I was coming up here, I'm coming up from Oklahoma, right around the corner, the curve there is all broken up really bad as well. Is that something he could fix at the same time?
I'm sure I can talk to him.
When you say buckle, do you mean the sidewalk buckle?
Oh, yeah, it is. We have a bicycle ramp now.
We saw it last night.
I saw that the other day.
Yeah, we talked about that, I had now, it's like...
I was hoping it was a sidewalk instead of the street. Yeah, that's where I was going with it.
Yes, it's a sidewalk.
I notice I'm, I'm getting similar stuff on my property from here, I'm drying out. I assume that's not surprising.
I know last year we paid to do the west side, all them streets buckled. You think we're gonna have the same issue? You have Buddy look at the rest of them, cause same people did the west side of the street, did their east side. You think it's gonna be the same problem over here that we had over there?
They must not have any expansion in them.
The state came in and did all of those side doors, so...
That's why can we have Buddy look at them and see?
Yeah, I can have him look at them.
You know, get it before it does break, somebody trips into them. So, the bathroom is, the cemetery is done?
Yes, it is.
Have you did finalize it? Sure it is? They're pretty good?
Yes, it is. I had pictures and I was gonna get them on there and I got busy up there and I have them on my phone, but I don't know.
The creek water line project is on schedule. I've seen it, I go by the date, so I can move this stuff in. Thank you, Tiffany.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I've got a couple of things I wanted to ask for.
Sure.
Tiffany, can you provide us another update on the, uh, the town board computer tablets? I know there's, you briefed delays like the last meeting, can you, can you update those delays? Or do we have new delays, what's up?
The holdup is getting the Microsoft 365. And we have to get the Microsoft, well, we don't have to, I can get them and they would come with regular Microsoft, which would cost around $250 a computer for the Microsoft Office program for each one. But then, when we get 365, then we're gonna have to pay for that again. And so, I was trying to get it to where we got the 365 and then the new computers at the same time, so we wouldn't be at that expense. But I think I'm gonna have to go ahead and, cause it's taking them quite a while to get the 365 stuff up and rolling. So, we may just go ahead and just get it with the Microsoft.
So, for your original plan though, that would've been what, another two or three months or maybe even longer? So, are you gonna wait, are you gonna wait, pull the trigger on using the older software and then upgrade later?
Yes.
What are we talking now, one month, two?
Um, we should, yes, one to two months.
Okay, thank you on that. What about an update on the last two water meters?
Um, trying to think which ones they are. One of them is we're gonna have to shut the water off at night to put in a valve to be able, cause it's a, I think it's a three inch meter over on Cemetery Road. And so, we're gonna have to shut the water down one night to put in some valves, so we can isolate that where they can change that meter off. We were going to plan on doing that in the next, within the next couple of weeks to, to get that going. But now, we're thinking this project over here, when they tie in to our, to our system, we're gonna have to shut the water down probably then too. So, we're trying to maybe coordinate with Mr. Goff to have it all done in one evening.
Okay, well, let's solve the, the last water meter also.
Yes.
So, we're talking month to six weeks?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can move our water billing over to...
No, we're going ahead and moving it now.
Moving it now?
Because those, we can, we can read them all the way out to the gallon.
Okay.
It's just you're gonna have to manually go out there and read them and make sure that we get them switched over. And since there's only two meters, I'm not too worried about getting those switched over. But your August 1st bill will be by the gallon.
Okay, so, what I heard you just say is you'll just have to manually read those last two meters until we can coordinate with Mr. Goff on the big project on, on Mitchell. And we should be able to solve the last two meters that way?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds great. What about, uh, can we talk for a second about our time cards software?
Okay.
Where are we at on that?
Well, everybody has it. We're trying to get accustomed right now, we're doing, um, so the first week, we kinda let them just play around with the system and then we wiped it clean. And then we started, uh, week, week, or last Monday. And now, they're running a time card with the clock-in system. So that we can compare and make sure that everything is running smoothly. We'll also be able to upload it into the system to make sure that that goes smoothly next week, that we'll still have our time cards to rely upon too. So, we'll probably do that for a couple, we said originally just one pay period doing that, the dual stuff. But I think we're gonna probably have to do more than one. So, probably two or three, and then we'll be totally on the...
I think that's a good idea to let them go in there and start and make a bunch of mistakes. I think that was a great idea, by the way, come up with that, Sheldon.
No, but I make the mistakes.
How many did you make? No, just kidding, Sheldon. Thank you for that update. I got a couple more here real quick. Uh, this is more information flow, you know, I don't expect an answer on this. I've got a citizen complaint on some sidewalks. And I'll get that to you.
Okay.
I've got some pictures and I'll send them to you. Are you gonna be here the rest of the week?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what about next week?
You know, I am gone on vacation next week. I'm taking my, I go every year to Falls Creek to fill it, and so, I'm taking my...
So, I'll be another weekend in the future, you'll be off.
Uh-huh.
And then you'll be back to follow it?
Then I'll be back.
Okay, all right.
Then I'll be back here on out.
Before you go this week, if you don't mind, I would like for you to talk to Brandon and Aaron. And I would like to get a tour of the fire department facility. And I would like to tour the police department facility. Could you, could you have them guys help me with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. One more question. I'm talking, I'm talking about our computer support, our IT people that you guys call when we have a computer go down. Do we have a contract with them or do we have a service agreement or what? How do they, how do they deal with us?
Um, it's just a service agreement that we have.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna ask you for a copy of that with a records request, probably tomorrow or the next day.
That's fine.
Okay. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Other scheduled business? For you want approval of June meetings? Minutes?
Okay, I asked for that to be brought down because if you look at 4.7 in the minutes, approval of the consent agenda, this was from June. Voting yes was Cliff, Harold, Randy, no, myself and David, and abstain David. And, uh, I just think that probably needs to be corrected since that's a permanent record in the town's archives that, so it doesn't look like David voted twice.
Let me tell you, I think that's part of this diligent, I think I'm gonna have to dig in the settings. I believe that it does an abstain as a no, so I'll see if I can change that in the settings.
Okay.
That was a setting that we set up in case abstaining is a no vote, and that's probably why they set it like that. Cause they asked us.
So, it's okay the way it stands?
I don't know, that would be a legal question, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's probably that setting that needs to be changed.
Good enough?
Yep.
Six one, discussion of possible action to quote, to approve the quote from S&amp;J Heating and Air Conditioning for replacement of a seven and a half ton Lennox rooftop unit at Town Hall.
Mr. Mayor, can we go back and on those minutes, do you want her to correct them before you vote to approve them? Or do you want to make a motion to approve them?
Ask me or him, who do you think? Since I, since I questioned it, do you? I'm fine with approving the minutes with the correction.
Well, I just didn't know if they needed to be on next month or if you wanted to go ahead and make a motion.
I said let's go ahead and approve it with corrections. I make a motion to approve the June meeting with, with the correction.
Second that.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Six one, discussion of possible actions to approve quote from S&amp;J Heating and Air Conditioning for replacement of a seven and a half ton Lennox rooftop unit at Town Hall. So, what'd they say about their whole?
It happened in the...
Evaporator coil.
Yeah.
It's definitely been here the day he went.
And in order to get a new one, just the evaporator coil, it's, um... They can't, I mean, it's gonna take anywhere from the end of August to, um, later. We wouldn't get it before the end of August. And it would probably be about, what did he say? It was gonna be like $4,000. $5,000 just for that.
And the unit is how old? It's up there, 12?
12 years. So...
If it's that old, I would agree that it needs to be replaced instead of repaired, that's my opinion.
Yeah, cause something else could go wrong and another four and your two thirds, the way it's done anyway. Plus, a new one's probably more efficient. Would be my guess.
We might even save enough to pay for it.
No.
You don't think so, Randy?
What's that?
I said we might, with, with the new efficiency levels, it might even be cheaper to put a new one up there.
Yeah, it could, it could sure pay for itself pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, S&amp;J Heating and Air Conditioning for replacement of a seven and a half ton Lennox rooftop unit at Town Hall.
Second.
Can we add the amount?
Yes. Of $12,913.56.
Tim, was that unit under warranty when the bank sold it? You all gonna cover that?
It's been longer ago than that. Your replacement since you moved in here.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion of possible action to establish a director of public works position under the direction of the town administrator.
I know you guys have been talking about, um, you know, this. And the more consideration I put into it, I went ahead and asked for that to be on there. I come up with a job description. I do know, and David, I know you asked about it being an ordinance. But it does, I mean, according to our attorney, it does not have to be.
So...
The only reason, and he told me I didn't have to bring it before you guys if I would've had it in the budget. But since it's not a budgeted position in the budget, therefore, that's why you guys need to approve it.
So, so here's my question then, this is follow-up to what I, you know, sent you. So, with Jared not here... And I'm not putting you on the spot here, but since you didn't answer my email, I was planning on discussing it, you know, with the board, you and Jared here tonight. And, you know, Jared's on vacation, so... So, here, here's my deal, here's my, here's my thought process here. Previous board eliminated that position by town code. And I know that because of the blue book you gave me for our code review, okay? So, I just don't see how, don't get me wrong, I want to vote yes to establish this position, okay? I, I do. I just don't see how I can do that though, with the code saying that the position is eliminated.
It doesn't say that it's eliminated, it's, I mean, it's just not in the code book anymore. It doesn't say this job has been eliminated. It's, it's just been stricken from the code. But you take, most of the jobs are not in the code anyway.
Well, we, you know, we have talked about, I'm sorry, Harold, did I take over the conversation?
No.
All right. I'm gonna keep going until you shut me up. So, here, here's, here's what I'm thinking. I don't want you to feel like I'm resisting the position, I'm not. A year and a half ago, I brought this up, let's get Pete, the public works director back in here, you know that. Everybody on the board knows that except maybe for Randy. I, I just, it's, it's, uh... I know what I saw in the code is what I'm telling you. And I was banking on Jared to be here tonight.
And he can explain it to you better. I mean, cause him and I talked, cause I asked him, I sent him the job description and I asked him about how I go about establishing this. And he told me at first, he said, well, you just publicize, you know, publicize and you hire. But then, the more we got to talking about it, since it wasn't a budgeted position, then I needed to bring it before the board to approve because then we're gonna have to do a budget movement and stuff like that.
Yeah, in other words, you plan on doing a budget movement after we approve the position and you do the hiring action?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and maybe not necessarily the hiring either, but at least giving me direction. Yes, you guys are going to approve this position. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm still leery, I'm not disagreeing with you about what's in the code, but I mean, there's some very strict language in the code.
I think the code...
I started to bring it with me also and I didn't do it because I thought Jared would be here.
I think the code too was set up because the director of public works was under the direction of the town board. And that's why a lot of times those positions were put in the code book.
Okay. All right, uh, one more thing from me.
But I'm following with the language.
Have I seen this job description before? Cause it looks a lot longer than it was. The last time I saw it, it was only down about this far on.
No, that's exactly how I...
It's exactly the same one? So, you just changed the font size then when you printed it out? I didn't mean that to be smart aleck either.
I didn't change any font size.
You didn't change anything, no font or nothing? The version I've got does not bleed over onto the second page. David, that goes back to that age thing we discussed earlier, the larger fonts. I need bigger bifocals.
No, that's the exact same one that I emailed out to you guys about three weeks ago. And I did take the original one that you guys talked about back before I came back. And I just kinda consolidated a little bit and put it into the current permit format that we're using.
And you still plan on keeping all of these job descriptions as living documents?
Oh, evident, yes, most definitely.
Cause they are a very good management tool and a very good way to correct, you know, problems. I'm feeling her.
You guys wanna table this or you wanna vote on it?
I'm okay either way, I, if, if Jared told Tiffany it was good to go, I don't have front votes on it, but either way, we can table this thing.
Is there a reason why we should, uh, push a court or...
No, I mean, it's totally up to you guys, I was just putting it out there, I just wanted to say it.
So, if we table, we'll table six three also. Could it be a discussion of possible action to approve the job description? So, I'd say let's table item six two and six three for next one. Discussion of possible actions concerning the town library and building permits being required of the Friends of Library Organization. Dave?
Okay, uh, I put this on here. I wanna make sure that, uh... I wanna make sure that, I tried to tone this, this, the tone I tried to put in this agenda item is intended to be non-confrontational. I'm trying to, I, I just, bottom line, and Pat's gonna wanna talk, I think, here in a few minutes in, in, uh, on this item, if, if permitted. What I'm trying to say here is, is that it, Pat let me know the other day that he was having a problem with a storage building that he wanted to, with the Friends of the Library, I say Pat, I'm talking about the Friends of the Library Organization. So, I went down there with Pat and he showed me what he was trying to do and he talked to me about the building permit application that he'd submitted, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm kinda stealing his thunder here, I kinda like to let him talk about that, if that's okay with you, you guys, Mr. Mayor?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right, so, I'll turn it over to Pat here on this item in just a second.
I wanna thank you for your time.
I wanna thank you for your time. Okay, let me come up here and stuff like that. So here's what I have, and this is what the information I turned in and stuff. And it consists of, let me get this out of here. That's the building. That's the placement permit, I mean, not permit, but the type of building, and the, and everything should be there. Permit's there. The first is the picture of the building. First is the type of building and everything else like that. The placement of the building against the library and a permit. And the last one is the drawing of it, the placement, and everything else like that. And I've turned this information in, and I cannot get it approved. I had the building ordered, had it ready to set up, and then delivery date set, but had to cancel all of it because of lots of confusion. So I brought it before you guys to, you know, everything's a future, this clean slate, I just wanna go forward with the project and get it placed, so we can get it done, so I can help with the summer program, get the autumn, you know, pump capacity. We got all kinds of projects. So I got, like, right now, you know, the reading programs going through there and having water balloon fly and stuff like that. All I wanna do is get it placed and get it written, so I can place it there and stuff like that. So if you got any questions, I'll do the best I can on answering them.
So the main problem that you're discussing with us is that you can't, you haven't gotten an approval on the building permit.
I've got, that's all, everything's proved, but I cannot get the final go-ahead for placement.
So the building permit is not approved yet?
There's not, there was, we never received a drawing showing where the building was gonna set to the library. I never got it.
I know. I turned it in, and you never got it, so I understand that problem. So this is all the stuff I turned in, and I'm just giving it to, right there, it's a clean slate, we go with that.
Do you have a copy of the drawing that you did on placement of the building, Pat?
That's it.
Oh, you had it here?
That is, right there.
Yeah.
That's it.
When did you turn that, 'cause when we sat and we talked-
I turned it in the day after, I put it up on your desk, I turned it in, and that was it.
'Cause I even went back and looked through all the paperwork in our building permits, and they weren't, they weren't there.
I didn't really show. I mean, I don't know what you gave me.
Do you have another copy?
Yeah, I got the original.
Can you send it to me or something?
I'll show it to you.
And didn't want to show in the law, and all, I know that the town requires a lot to show setbacks. I see you have pictures-
No, it's against the building and stuff like that. And David-
Yeah, I went down there and looked at it.
He's, stuff like that, he gave me the tone, and I ordered the building, you know, eight by twelve, because how would I know the permit was true if it never had been approved by eight by twelve? So.
Did you see in there what you're, you got enough in there to approve what Pat's asking for approval on? Or do you need David to look at that before you can answer that?
Yes, once we get the draw, I mean, David brought it to me, and he said, they're just asking for a storage building and stuff like that. And I know we require everything to be put on paper where they're gonna place it and different things, and so that's what we were needing. Because once he said that, the storage building, as long as it didn't interfere with any of the city functioning-
Right.
-with utility easements, different things, then it would be fine.
Okay.
And that's one thing that I talked to Pat when he came in here that day, is I just needed that drawing.
Yeah.
And so.
So actually, you spurred another question for me on this. Are we talking international codes here? Is that what we're talking about?
Um, our codes and international codes.
Okay. Tell me, I know we discussed this several months ago about the dustless parking lot.
Uh-huh.
Can you jog my memory and tell me what drives us to the international codes? Is there a state law that tells us to comply with international codes?
And we've adopted the international codes.
I'm sorry?
We've adopted in our codebook the, what the state uses.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
In our code, we adopted whatever addition the state is going by.
Okay, so the state is the driver of us. What you're saying is the board decided we would pursue international codes?
Whatever the state has adopted.
Okay. And the reason it's set up that way is because, I'm guessing there's different versions of international code that come out, and layers-
Different years.
Right. It's a big onion with a bunch of different layers on it. Okay, that's what I wanted, you know? I gave all my copies to the board.
Pat, can you come back up here for a minute, please?
Okay.
You need to, I don't know if you got the right one. I gotta ask you a question. On your drawing, okay, the wall.
Okay. This is north. Just like the picture, you go to the picture, the picture of it, of placement. See how it sits just like this? The drawing contains just like that. There's a, it's twelve foot right here, there's four foot between here and the bicycle stand, and-
That was all measured, to the bicycle stand?
Your place is wrong, of course. This is north, this is the wall.
That's the wall where you-
Yeah, this is the wall right here.
That's the edge of the building.
That's the edge of the building. That's over, twelve feet. Then from over here to the bicycle stand, hang on a second. And that's it right there. That's the north wall, and you're looking at it like that.
My question is, though, if I didn't have this picture, that's why, you know, that's the edge of the building. Right here, right?
Yeah.
So you're all my deal, where you actually want that building, please?
We want both of the buildings.
Yeah, you pick your building.
Right here, twelve feet.
Right here. This is all your building.
Yeah, twelve foot. Eight foot tall.
So all this. You get that?
Have you got what you need?
Well, yeah, but I can't tell squat from that. I mean, that doesn't-
That's north. You're facing the building right there.
No, I understand that.
I think you're probably-
This right here, see?
I mean, this is not what you accept from-
With explanation, I understand.
Because it's not showing like the whole building, where it will-
We don't look at these things ourselves either, to understand.
Does that mean?
So I got north, and I got shift, he's got shifted around to the north part. And that's the placement of the building, right there.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Thanks, Pat.
Okay, so I'm gonna come back on the agenda item again, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. So let me say this, and this is a suggestion only, and, you know, you take it or leave it, whatever you want to do. Correct me if I'm wrong, we have, in that building down there, we have at least three organizations doing stuff down there. We have our municipal government library, we have town employees in there, we have Friends of the Library in there. And I'm not real sure of what I'm getting ready to say, is we got a museum committee that's doing stuff down there as far as museum stuff is concerned. That's not true? Okay, all right. Well, irregardless, is there any other organizations doing anything down there?
Like, what do you mean by doing? Because, I mean, you have the library, the library, which is town-funded and everything, and then by ordinance, we have the library board, which helps us oversee different activities of the library.
I got it.
And then they have created their own little nonprofit called Friends of the Library, where they raise money and donate to the library and their function.
I knew that already, but I didn't realize that, that the board, the library board, so in other words, you guys are blended together. The board, the library board, and the Friends of the Library is actually one organization?
No, two separate.
Okay, so you guys have a charity, five oh three, five oh one three C?
The Friends of the Library.
That's the Friends of the Library.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense to me, makes sense to me. Okay, so irregardless, let me go over my point, let me go with my point. From my own life experiences, when you have more than one organization working in, on, or around the same area, I strongly suggest a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement between all organizations that are in the area. I think that would help. And the reason I'm saying that is I'm kinda, Harold hadn't taken us down to the next, to the next agenda item yet. But what I just said will apply, that's my suggestion on six point four and six point five. I strongly suggest that we get, as time moves on, there may be some more people in there doing stuff. And they could be, you know, and to write that memorandum of agreement, I think we would need representatives from each organization. I think Friends of the Library would need to participate in that, at least one of the board members might wanna participate in that, and then you guys. So I'll hush about it.
Tiffany, well, I got, you was gonna say something. Now that we got all of these, is there any way that we could get Dave, David, to go out and look at this and do his job tomorrow?
He won't be here this week?
Or how about Monday?
I could call him.
I don't see where this is a town board issue. I mean, has David looked at it?
Him and I discussed it, and we were just meeting on that drawing.
Right.
And I met with Pat.
Well, and I'm gonna be honest, and believe me when I say this, that nothing I want more than the Friends of the Library to be able to do that, put that building in there, but I don't see that the town would have approved a site plan that didn't show the entire site and was just a rough sketch. So anyway, that's my two cents, but I, I don't, I don't see where this is, we've got a, we've got a avenue in place for building permits to be approved, so I don't see that this is a town board issue.
I didn't put it on here, I put it on for discussion, Bert. I sent one agenda item in for discussion, not a vote, and somehow my one agenda item turned into two. And it says, all I had on my agenda item was discussion, and now these two say with possible action. So that's not my fault. I'll make sure you know that, sir.
So, Pat, I know that, you know, since we got all the paperwork now, we can turn this over to David, and, you know, let him, you know, go through the steps. You know, you know, Pat, what Bert's gonna say, you know, sometimes you gotta have a little bit more detail in the drawings, you know?
I did the best I can.
I understand, you know?
I'm working with-
Yeah, I went through the same thing when I built my house, you know? I tried to draw it up all by myself the first time, and got kicked out, and, you know, you know, so.
Just need to be able to put this so we could, yeah, the last year.
I understand that. Maybe that now we got everything that we need, let us go, let David do his job Monday and see where we can go from there. You know, you got all four board members now all know about it, it's not a secret to nobody, you know? So.
So when David says we're good to go, we can go and have him deliver the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you can talk to David?
Well, I can, I gotta wait till Monday, I guess, again. Because he's already talked to me twice about it, but.
Like I said, some of the, all the documents weren't there, now we got everything, so you can't say the documents weren't there.
Everybody's got it, board member's got it, and now Tiffany's got a copy of it, so.
All right, I appreciate it. Discussion with possible action concerning the mowing and trimming and upkeep of the outside of the town library.
Yeah, this, I sent this in also, again, trying to be in a constructive manner. There's a lot of overgrowth in vegetation on the south end of the building, you know, where the little, it looks like it used to be like a little reading area or a little, a small park, benches, air conditioner units, trees, it's all, it's all overgrown. There's several rumors going around, some of the town employees are saying that it's supposed to be the library employees that mow that and trim it and take care of it. And then some of the town employees think they should be doing it, and I don't know where to go from there.
When, um-
It looks bad, is what I'm saying.
Mary Haney put that in. She wanted a little garden. So Mary Haney put that in with the understanding that the library was going to maintain that.
But that was her love, and she did all of that. We no longer have that at the library.
You guys don't blow it anymore?
No.
Because I will tell you, like, our flowers here, we water them, we plant them, we do, we take, we pick weeds out in our parking lot, I mean, we take care of our, and that's similar with the different places. So I don't know how to answer that, David.
Can I ask you something? I just proved air conditioner, twelve thousand dollars for this building right here. We got trees growing up by all three of them units sitting down there on that deal. I drove down there today to look at this deal. The high school gymnasium, or the old school gymnasium, has got a tree growing right by the condenser, you know? I don't know why we can't take care of that. The old school, the storm shelter right there, you know? When I looked at it, there's trees growing up beside it, you know, eventually them limbs and everything's gonna be in those deals, and we'll be spending money on air conditioner for that. You know, why can't we get that? You know, far as I'm concerned, if they don't want it, let's rip it all out, we got trappers, you know?
It's got a dead tree in there. I've taken care of it, well, excuse me, we have taken care of it, Friends of the Library, I've weeded it thousands of times and sprayed it, we had it sprayed this year for weeds and stuff like that. It's got some beautiful rock underneath, somebody dumped sand on top of it. And what we need to do, and it's got a dead tree, we've got the downspouts, I mean, the guttering system fixed, they came in and did, cut them all plug off, and they got that fixed, but it's got a dead tree that keeps splitting, piss down him, excuse my language, but keeps breaking and splitting and banging up against the building, and basically it's gonna split and just gonna go right into the outdoor end. What I would do, take that out?
I would just take it out. I mean, if the library doesn't use it and no one really wants it, it doesn't sound like-
So this is something that I will talk at my manager's, next manager's meeting, is that everybody is responsible for their, not necessarily the upkeep and stuff like that, but to bring forward any problems and let's try to find solutions. Just like when you guys approved to fix the guttering down there, I said, Stephen, you find, you get the quote, you get, you know, you take care of your building, and then we can go from there. That's, I will, I will get with the managers on that.
But my, like I said, I see the air conditioner today that we're proposing for here, you know, it could happen very easily down there, why, why we ain't take care of it?
Take them out, yeah, take the trees.
Again, I would like to reemphasize my memorandum of agreement type thing, to make sure that, you know, I know you're gonna talk to Stephen, but you may wanna put it in writing, in agreement with Friends of the Library and the library board, and whatever else the museum folks are trying to do down there. And we can have a conversation about that if you want.
And that, that's fine. I just, like, stuff like this, I wish you guys would come in and talk to me, because a lot of this, we can get done.
You were on vacation.
I know, but I didn't even know anything about it until I seen it on the agenda.
Me too.
I mean, so, I mean, there's just stuff that we can solve without spending numerous hours in here.
Okay, all right. I have a comment on that. I have a comment on that. I gotta tell you a short story, I'm gonna make it three sentences or less. When I first got elected, I was lucky. I had a town administrator and a mayor, Mayor Wrights, who immediately grabbed me by the neck of the neck, and both of you told me that, about the Open Meetings Act, and that I am ever- and that I am absolutely unauthorized to talk to any more than one board member about any issue, unless I'm in the meeting. And through the last two years and so many months, I've been trying to get stuff on the agenda to talk about, things that I wanna talk to you guys about, and I've gotten resistance over and over and over.
But those things could be talked about to the town administrator, those don't have to be-
Well, that's your judgment, it's my judgment on my things, it's your judgment on your things.
Okay.
I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about this stuff on the library.
Okay. Then a motion should be made of what you're wanting to accomplish and vote on, if it's on the agenda.
Well, do we, do we wanna do a memorandum of agreement? So I'll make a motion right now.
I don't see one that's- Go ahead. I don't see anything's necessary.
You don't think it's necessary? Okay.
Because the library board and the Friends of the Library have nothing to do with the upkeep of that building.
Well, I totally agree, I think it should be town people doing it.
It should, absolutely.
But, uh-
Unless they've got something special, I'll tell you, when we first built the fire station, we planted flowers around it. Do you remember that, Tim? And the firemen took care of the flowers, we bought the flowers, we watered the flowers, until it grew up in weeds and we took it out.
I think that was a good idea. But, yeah, you know, uh, so my, my agenda, my agenda items, my agenda items are mine. If I wanna talk to you guys about something, I'm gonna put it on the agenda for discussion. And like I said earlier in the meeting, I put this on for discussion, I didn't put it on for a vote. Somehow the wording got changed on my agenda item, it was turned into two, and then it was put on here with possible action. That's not my stuff. I have copies of what I sent in, if anybody wants to see that.
Okay, Dave, I'm gonna say, right, when we were talking on the phone, I asked you if you just wanted to talk about it, because then I said, you know, if you want any action taken, we can, if it just says discussion. And so you said, oh, okay. But as far as it being two, um, yeah, that was probably me that split it, because it looked like two different items to me.
Well, I sent in one item, and my, the bottom line of what I wanted to discuss tonight with the board members and Ms. Tillman was that I think that we need to organize a memorandum of agreement with all of the organizations that are working out of that building down there. And that's all I'll say, I'm done with it for tonight. Ms. Tillman, if you wanna talk to me about it some more, I'll talk to you, you know, outside of this meeting, like, like Bert is suggesting. And, uh, I'm done with it.
Six, six, discussion with possible action to move to September meeting due to OML conference.
Okay, I put this item on too, I wanted to kinda discuss it, you know, with, as it, it will be a, a money spending thing. That's why I put it on for tonight. If we're gonna attend the, uh, OML conference in September, we need to, we'll, we'll either need to move the meeting or we'll need to drive back from Tulsa to attend the meeting that night. And I wanted the group, I wanted the board members and Ms. Tillman and Kelly and Shelley to have a shot at discussing the possible moving it to another date, that would be convenient to as many people as possible. It doesn't matter to me, I'm willing to drive back from Tulsa to attend the meeting that night. What do you guys think?
I don't think that should be necessary, can we not just move it up one day?
To the night?
To the Monday.
That's gonna be the school board meeting.
So.
Just so you, just putting it out, no, 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 I'm just putting it out there. So.
I mean, okay. And I don't mean that facetiously, I don't- The two boards don't interact or anything, or we don't have mutual members, so.
I'm not coming on a Friday. I'm not coming on a Friday. I get off at five o'clock on Fridays, I don't like my weekends.
But I don't think I'd have to drive back to Tulsa.
No.
Well, it means with Friday, you're into the ball.
You guys think it's a good idea to move the meeting?
Yeah, I know, but I'm-
Okay, it doesn't matter to me what Dave did, so, I mean-
Well, I meant start on Tuesday.
I'd rather make it convenient for you guys, because it's convenient for me any night of the week, uh-
Well-
Mondays are fun, isn't it?
And the agenda's cut off on Fridays, so moving it to Monday would be fine, right?
Yeah.
That would be posted by-
What do you ladies think? Make a date, I don't care, I don't think these guys do either.
The ninth will work, because I don't, you, you're not gonna, the ninth is the only time during that week that we can have it.
Okay, because of the schedule of the OML conference.
Correct.
Okay, well, that, okay, you. Any more discussion, I'll do a motion.
Good.
The ninth, which is a, is that a Monday?
Yes.
Is the ni- is the ninth a Monday?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that August? September.
September.
Okay, I make, I make a motion to move the September meeting from the current schedule to six P.M., the evening of the ninth of September.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, only thing is with that, is that the attorney will not be able to attend that meeting, because he has, now, he could probably send somebody else, but that's King Fisher's meeting night, so just so you're aware.
I think it'd be better than driving back.
Okay, so we're leaving, we're leaving it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
New business? Council person's report, Dave?
Nothing, sir.
Randy?
I don't have anything.
Bert?
No.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
So I take my part.
John, who made it?
I gotta go see my big grandbaby.
Who's saying that?
Oh, that's. Thanks, Pat.
And I hear that.
You too.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Town of Hennessy, Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees meeting, called order. Here.
So with our new system, like, when we're in that meeting, we're gonna have to take like a break. Like, a five-minute break to let us, especially when we get the stuff flowing up on the screen. To get it switched over. To get it all switched over to the new meeting, if you guys could take like a five-minute break.
That'd be more enticing if there were refreshments.
Yeah.
Good meeting.
Yeah, but it's Wednesday, I don't think so.
All right, Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Minutes of previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows, Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Previous month's utilities authority fund, zero. Accepted department reports. Brian Burke and the Water Department.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Who's that? Okay, Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Sisters and comments. Tim and Barbara, Dr. Grits. For other scheduled business. New business. Sisters and comments.
There's your chance, Tim, you tired us out.
Council person's report, Dave?
Nothing, sir.
Randy?
Nothing.
Bert?
No.
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
See if y'all had a quick meeting like this, and we could run over to the school board meeting on September.
I'm not running anywhere.
Jack has some.
Did I start at seven?
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.